We'd like to welcome everyone to our monthly meeting of the Tyler Independent School District Board of Trustees. This meeting was previously called to order and a notice of the meeting was posted in the time and manner required. Once again, we'd like to welcome everyone here tonight as we work through our agenda. The first item that we start with every month is the prayer and pledge of allegiance. So if you could please stand, I will lead us in that. All right, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we gather here tonight filled with joy and gratitude over the resurrection of your Son, Jesus Christ, and the hope it gives all of us here on earth. We ask for your wisdom for this board and its direction with our administration and its delivery and with our children as they go through these formative years here at TISD. We know your instruction comes in many forms, so let us each be open to your teaching. Continue to bind this board and our community together in the common name, my Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Dr. Crawford, at this time, we'll move into some action items from executive session regarding personnel. You want to take these one at a time or all at once?
I think it'd be appropriate to take them one at a time by Roman numeral.
Okay. I'll take a motion on Roman numeral one.
Mr. President, I move we approve the contract renewals in Roman numeral one as submitted by administration.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second motion.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Next, we move to Roman numeral two.
Mr. Chairman, I move, Mr. President, I move that we approve the renewal of the contracts under Roman numeral two.
Thank you. Reverend Mason, second.
Second motion.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, we move to Roman numeral three.
Mr. President, I recommend we approve the renewal of the contracts listed under Roman numeral three.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, Roman numeral four. Take a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we recommend the district's recommendation to terminate the two contracts under Roman numeral four.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Very well. Now, we have several minutes to approve from workshop, the March 9th workshop and the regular meeting of March 27.
I so move.
All right. Dr. Nation, move. Is there a second?
Second.
To approve those minutes? All right. Any discussion, changes, alterations, improvements? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries also. At this point, we go to special recognitions. Parnell is going to come up and lead us in that.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Crawford. Tonight, we'd like to begin our recognitions by announcing our two district students of the month for April. We would like to recognize Laraya Johnson as our elementary student of the month, and she's a kindergarten student at Andy Woods Elementary School. Our secondary student of the month is Mariana Lopez-Pinata, a 12th grade student at Rise Academy. Congratulations to both of these students, and at this time, we'll watch a brief video. Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two district students of the month. These students are selected based on six criteria: academic performance, effort, character, behavior, citizenship, and attendance. We would like to recognize Jeriah Johnson, a kindergarten student at Andy Woods Elementary, as our elementary student of the month. Jeriah says being in kindergarten feels great, but there's a lot of work.
We do paperwork and do centers mostly after we do paperwork. And then after centers, then we might do some more paperwork.
Jeriah says her favorite activity is math hubs.
It's something that you gotta do, mostly it's kinda equals, numbers, and letters and math. I can count to 100.
Jeriah wants to follow her teacher, Ms. Schultz, and become a teacher herself. Ms. Schultz says Jeriah has a positive attitude and never gives up. She's a great example of a wrangler leader. Our secondary student of the month is Mariana Lopez-Pinata, a 12th grade student at the Rise Academy. She understands what it takes to be a good student.
I think it all depends on the attitude that you put in you every day and all the things that you do. And it's more about that, you know, sometimes you don't feel as good as others, but you have to put all your effort in whatever you're doing. You have to be positive. You have to think about the future and focus on your education, 'cause, you know, it's gonna get you somewhere.
Mariana says her favorite subjects are biology, chemistry, and math. She already has planned her career and future education.
I'm thinking about being a medical laboratory scientist, and I really applied for TJZ, Tyler Junior College. That's what my plans are right now.
Mariana thanks her teachers at the Rise Academy and says it's the perfect place for her to earn her high school diploma and focus on her coursework. Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and leadership in the classroom. Their efforts are being recognized through TISD-TV and sponsorship by Christus Trinity And I would like to ask Jeriah Johnson, our elementary student of the month, to please come forward. forward at this time. in the National High School Ethics Bowl. This competition promotes respectful, supportive, and rigorous discussion of ethics among high school students nationwide. Twenty-four schools from across the nation qualified for the 2017 competition held at the University of North Carolina. The following avid seniors represented John Tyler at the competition. And as I call your name, if you would please come to the front, Avery Oliver, Tamia Williams, Next, we'd like to congratulate our April Teacher of the Month, and that's Ms. Jennifer Vaughn, and she's a teacher from Dixie Elementary School where she teaches art. Ms. Vaughn, if you please come forward. Finally, tonight, April is Volunteer Appreciation Month, and Tyler ISD is so thankful for the service of more than 3,050 registered volunteers from across the district. Our Raptor system shows the following volunteers as having the most hours logged this school year. Shawanda Moni from Bell Elementary with 444 hours. Alicia Eckert from Jack Elementary with 434 hours. And James Hobbs from Jones Elementary with 406 hours logged. We are so thankful for these volunteers. Thank you.
to go into some continuous improvement student outcome section that we have moved up in our agenda. And the first item is our Lone Star Governance Goal One, early literacy.
So as our commitment to the calendar that the board and the superintendent and administrative team devised, as Dr. Hanson makes her way up to the table, we have an update for you tonight with early literacy and benchmark two update. Dr. Hanson?
Thank you, board and Dr. Crawford. Real quick, just wanted to update you on the Lone Star Governance Goal One. And just as a reminder, I'm gonna have to flip both here. And just as a reminder of our goal one is the number of students who are on grade level in reading at the end of third grade according to that RIT score. Remember that RIT score is a formulaic score that basically tells you norm grade level across the nation. And that they'll increase from 39% in the spring of 2016 to 85% in the spring of 2021. And tonight, we're talking about progress monitor. No? There we go. Tonight, we're talking about progress measure one, which is the percentage of students who met the standard on the third grade state assessment. That will increase from 64% in 2016 to 85% in 2021. The progress measure that we're looking at is our target, year one target, 68% that we intend to attain by the end of the year this year. So we just took our second benchmark, and I just wanted to update you on our progress towards that. I apologize. So this graph depicts the three tests that we've taken over the year, and we've talked about this data. So you're aware of the nine-week assessments and the benchmark one, and now I'm bringing to you to not benchmark two scores. And you can see the progress towards that 68%, or the 60% is actually index one, what we would have to achieve in index one. But we want 68% of our kids to get to that measure. So that's by campus. We will always have a little fluctuation back and forth depending on the content, where the kids were. Just as a reminder, the nine-week assessment assessed the content up to that nine weeks at a DOK or at a rigor level of a one or a two. We were just measuring content. And then benchmark two, it was the content up through December, but it was at what we would consider a higher rigorous level, a level that was similar to what the kids will see on STAR. And then benchmark two was a released test or clone items if the kids had seen that item too often. And it was the most STAR-like of any assessment that they took up to that point. So it was the most rigorous assessment up to that point. Based on the results of this benchmark, the kids were then, we then began our four-week review to have the kids ready for the STAR test, which is the first week of May. So then, this is the third week, the third, the benchmark average. So there's that benchmark one average at 55% and the benchmark two average. And of course, we're trying to get to 68%. That's our target for this year. We feel confident we will get there. We were at 64% last year. Any questions about the third grade data? So moving right along, we're gonna then get into the benchmark data. So I know that I talked to you last month about benchmark two data, and that was for our, the items that we were, the grade levels and the subjects we were gonna take early, right? We've already taken that test. We're expecting the scores at any minute for that fifth and eighth grade. Now, we're talking about the assessments that the kids are gonna take the first week of May. So these are the elementary scores. The secondary, we're finishing up their benchmarks as we went to print last week, towards the end of last week. So that data is just now being analyzed, but these are our elementary scores. For third grade math, we were happy to see those math scores come up because, remember when I talked about third grade math a couple months ago? We were like, oh my. So the math scores are increasing. We feel, we feel like those are gonna get where they need to be. And this is our fourth grade reading. What we're seeing with our reading scores is the kids are making, as we've talked about before, they start making incremental huge progresses as they get into those STAR grades. What our goal is, is to move that progress down to pre-K through two so that we're not trying to get all of that progress happening in the STAR grades. We need it to happen earlier, as we've talked about before. And then there's our fourth grade math benchmark scores, benchmark two scores. And then there, that's the fifth grade science. They will take that test the first week of May as well. So there, there we have our third grade district average in benchmark one and benchmark two, math and reading, just as a synopsis for you to see them together. And our fourth grade district average in all of the tested subjects, reading, math, and writing. And even though we didn't go through writing this time, I wanted you to see all of it because we talked about writing last month when I brought you benchmark data. So I wanted you to see it all together. And there's our, there are our fifth grade scores. So those look like big jumps, but you notice that it's 54-51. It's the, it's the scale of the graph there. Questions about benchmark data for elementary?
You mentioned in the, I guess, third grade reading that there was increasing rigor from nine-week to benchmark one, benchmark two. Does the same thing hold true for the other grades and the other content areas?
Right. Yes, the nine-week assessment for all of the, all the grades and all the content, that nine-week assessment is really just to see, are we on our pacing instructionally? It's written at a, at a, really, do you know the content level? And then the first benchmark is the first district level assessment. Certainly, the teachers write us other assessments, but the first district level assessment that's written at the level of STAR. So we're typically not overly concerned if it's, if the scores are pretty low because third grade especially, it's the first exposure maybe that they've had to that level. But fifth grade, I mean, the second benchmark is a release test. It goes through all of the content from, it's just not that grade level, remember? So if you're taking a fifth grade test, a reading test, you're taking the content kindergarten through fifth grade. Some people don't realize that, that it's not just a fifth grade test. So fifth grade science, for example, is kindergarten through five, all of the science standards that they have.
So when will the next scores come out?
So the fifth, fifth grade and eighth grade reading and math, we expect those at any second. They're expected to be released. In fact, we have the district level ones that were just released as I was coming into the meeting. So they're analyzing that data right now, and we should get the summaries soon. Those students are gonna be able to retake that assessment because retention is dependent on that. So they're gonna be able to retake that. They'll retake it the first week of May. And then the secondary benchmark scores we're analyzing right now. So the kids finished that Thursday before we left for Easter holiday, they finished up their benchmark scores. But the benchmark scores, we're finished with that now. We're, we're down to taking the assessments, the state assessments at this point. Did that answer your question, Reverend Mason?
June or July?
Yes.
Depending upon when everything gets cleaned up and official, given back to us from the state. So we're through with the benchmarking.
Yes.
Now, you may have another map, end-of-year map.
We'll have end-of-year map. Yes, sir.
Data that might be presented to you prior. I have my calendar in front of me as far as when you're getting presented. As far as performance data goes, we've pretty much ended the cycle for the year. So we have the STAR exams that are coming around. That's right.
Did you say the third graders would be taking the STAR?
Yes, ma'am. They take the STAR the first week of May.
First week of May.
Reading and math.
Reading and math?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, if they don't pass that, are they retained to go back through the third grade?
No, not in third grade. In third grade, what, if they don't pass, we put together an accelerated instruction plan, and we began to help them in fourth grade, an individual learning plan for them in fourth grade so that we can remediate.
Thank you.
Speaking of that, are we able to use the benchmark, you know, one and two data prior to the STAR testing to help out, help identify specific needs of specific kids? And are we able to kind of dispatch help to those kids that, on a very specific, I mean, does it, are we able to, you know, take that data and learn about each individual student that way? And do we, you know, kind of do that?
Right. So the answer to that is certainly we do. We do that, starting with benchmark, benchmark one, actually. We began to look at, we disaggregate the data based on standards and where the students were strong and where they needed some extra assistance. And then after benchmark two, we have compressed our curriculum so that we're finished. By the time the students take benchmark two, we are finished teaching their curriculum, hopefully. And, and as we, we know some of the individual situations with some of that data where we knew where the curriculum didn't get finished, and it took the teacher an extra week or two. But we're able to get that curriculum finished so that then we have a four-week review. And we work with each student individually based on their strengths and weaknesses so that they can really be ready for that test.
Dr. Hanson, could you comment then on, if that's what's happening for individual students, what happens in terms of support for schools that might be on the bottom side of this data?
So that's typically where we deploy our CNI department and any extra people we have at the district level. They begin to see small groups of students, teach classes, stand in for teachers who may still be struggling with the content. They're, they may be actually teaching the classes. The campuses also are putting their people back in the classroom. So if they have a master teacher, an RTI teacher, or anyone else who is not, who may not have students assigned to them, they then also are, everyone is seeing kids, in other words. I was at a campus this week where one of the coordinators had a group of kids, and she was teaching a writing, you know, a reading lesson. So everyone is deployed at this point based on the data. And we've also gone in and done data protocols with every PLC in third, fourth, and fifth grade, well, secondary as well, by the way. You're just not looking at the secondary data, but we've done PLCs, so we know exactly which students need which items, and everyone's deployed to make that happen from, from third grade through EOC.
The teachers who are struggling, as you have said, am I to assume that they will be going through training this summer?
Yes.
To better prepare them to?
Yes. Yes, the teachers who are staying with us who are struggling, they will be going through training and helping them learn the content so that, so that they're prepared for it next year. It's tough. If you, if you're a brand-new teacher and you come in and you teach a tested grade, you know, we don't have several years for you to sort of learn your craft like we used to. When I was, when I was a first-year teacher, I had, I had some time and grace, but we have to, teachers have to sort of hit, be ready quickly. So the ones who, the teachers who we're helping, certainly, we continue to give them the training they need.
I do believe students deserve the very best. I do believe students deserve the very best educator that we can provide them. So, I certainly hope that these struggling teachers will no longer be struggling.
We agree.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson.
Okay. Now, we come to our public participation portion of the meeting. And we have two, three speakers signed up tonight. Our first speaker, Jacqueline. Like it sounds, just, yeah, Kwaku.
Yes.
All right. Jacqueline, welcome to the meeting. And just step right there to the podium.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the TISD bond and why everyone here should vote yes if you are going to be voting for it. I just wanted to, for example, say that I was, I've been privileged to take health science classes at the CTC. And like, as you guys all know, it's a brand-new building. It's beautiful. And I can attest to that kids that are in that building who are taking classes are motivated to do very well. Since it's such a new building, they want to be, we were the first ones to come in. They want to be the ones who set the standard for everyone else coming before, coming after us. So, building a brand-new school, I know that the motivation level at Robert E. Lee could go up tremendously. Kids will do better. Kids will be more motivated to go to school and excel in their classes. And it would just, it would increase school pride immensely. And I really think that everyone here should vote yes, because we deserve a new school, students deserve a new school to excel in. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker, whose handwriting has improved dramatically in his two-month absence, is Bob Brewer.
Thank you, Board, for the opportunity to speak my mind. As you know, I'm opposed to the upcoming bond and the $380 million cost to voters over the next 30 years. But, that's not the only reason I'm opposed to the bond. Part of it has to do with performance. But mainly, I'm really concerned about the time that we have the bond. It's in May when almost nobody votes. Like, in the May 9th of 2015 TISD election, there were 1,041 people voted for two board spots. The citywide election, there were, in 2016, I guess it was, 3,094 people voted. So, when you do the math of the expense over the number of people that voted for those, for what our bond is going to be, that means each vote amounts to $124,835, plus or minus 20%, probably. All these numbers are a little odd. As we Texas has the ninth-largest economy on earth, and the biggest expense of the ninth-largest economy is education. And anytime there's that much money on earth going toward one function, there's a lot of special interests that are in there to grab their money. And I think holding the elections in May is part of that problem, so that the vote can be sort of decided by a smaller group of people that have a special interest in having that passed. So, anyway, we do live in a constitutional republic as opposed to a democracy. We elected our board to represent us in choosing when to hold these elections and for how much, and if it's a remodel or whatever. Anyway, so you guys decided to have the bond election. So, now, we're, we take it to the voters. But unfortunately, since the bond is held in May, it's to a very proportionately small number of voters. And I think if it was held during like a general election, where there's many more voters, like in the last general election, there were like 45,000 people in the city of Tyler that voted, 85,000 in Smith County. And I think if we had a larger number of people voting for this bond, I don't believe it would pass, considering the performance that we've exhibited recently by the TA results and just other things that I've seen. So, anyway, I apologize for my lack of presentation. Hopefully, there's some meaning in what, that you can follow on what I've tried to say. But, I really would like for you and all our citizens here to try to get these school bond elections on the November ballot, when more people will be paying attention and voting on how much money we're going to be spending in the next 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Tristan Ferguson, knows his way to the podium as
All right. For those who don't know me, of course, my name is Tristan Ferguson. I'm a senior at John Tyler High School and a part of the speech and debate team. And of course, I'm speaking in firm affirmation of today's, of rather, the TISD bond. Now, before we actually talk about the bond, we have to focus on the fact that in 2005, I started my journey in the greatest school district in the state of Texas. And Tyler ISD has helped mold and develop me into the young man that I am today. And now, we face something that is about granting the hope back to not only the citizens, but to the students within the school system as well. Now, we know this is the same hope that is given to the young girl that is starting her first day in kindergarten. This is the same hope that is given to the young college student who's looking for his roommate in his dorm. And this is the same hope that was given to a skinny kid with a funny haircut, who believed that Tyler ISD had a place for him, too. Now, when looking at the bond, we can see that, of course, there is opposition, and those who feel as if voter turnout is a huge issue. But even then, we have to focus on the signs in which we're, in which the bond is, in which the bond is focused on. We see that we have major success when it comes to, when it comes to response from the bond. And not only is this response important, but also, let's look at the statistical data. Now, we have to go back to a research done by the Pew Research Center that shows that when a school is made to resemble that, it's cohesion, that academic performance goes up. Now, when looking at the bond, we can see that those portable buildings are to be removed, and students are to be moved back into the classrooms, which has a positive effect on the learning environment for these students. So, Mr. Brewer, though I respect your position in voter turnout, we have to focus on the fact that when looking at the people who care about the bond now, their opinions do matter. And so, by having the election in May, this is no better time. Now, another thing we have to focus on is the opposition of the money cost and exactly where this money goes. Now, as he said, I'm not 18 yet, but many individuals here voted you in the positions that you're in, and we respect you very much. And I know for a fact, even being at a young age, I trust you with the funds when it comes to this bond. And I ask that all of you will, too. So, at the end of the day, when all is said and done, we have to focus on granting hope back to the citizens, fixing our community. And this is best done through the school system. Thank you.
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
It's nice to have a forum where our debate students can exercise their craft. Yes, champions. All right. We will move on now to the business, legal, finance consent agenda. Board members, are there any items? Or Dr. Crawford, got a gifts and donations? Any other items? I'm going to pull E just for a little discussion. Nothing much.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so, if we can get a motion for A, B, D, F, G, and H, if there's no others to be pulled?
I move that we approve items A, B, G, D, and F.
That's one way to do it. A, B, D, F, G, H.
Sorry.
All right. Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Item C is gifts and donations.
Yeah, I love the practice of this school board to pull donations that are $5,000 or above. Again, these enterprising funds go to special opportunities for our students, whether it be athletics, fine arts, or in this case, the John Tyler Scholarship Fund, as provided by Adrian Harvey. I'm very appreciative of that, sending students to college. And the gift of $5,000, again, to the John Tyler Scholarship Fund. Thank you, Adrian Harvey, for all that you do for our kids at John Tyler.
That's great. All right. Let's get a motion on the approval of the donation by Miss, by Adrian Harvey.
Still moved.
All right. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, comments?
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Once again.
Very good. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item C passes. And item E, I've asked Mr. Loper to just come give us a little bit of a update on, on our, you know, what were new schools, or at least have been in the bond package, renovation package, new school, and what we do to continue to get life out of these new schools. And we don't just build them and let them sit for 40 years until they're run down. So, Mr. Loper, you can just give the public a little idea.
Thank you, Mr. Birdville, and board members, and Dr. Crawford. Just some quick facts. We started into this back in 2003 with previous boards, and the boards have been very committed on taking care of our schools and making sure that we do our preventive maintenance and our life cycle of replacement costs from parking lots to HVAC, to painting, to roofs, to flooring. So, but tonight, we're going to talk about painting. So, just to give you an idea is what our scope of work is. Really, it's pretty simple. When we go and we look at the school prior to ever coming to you with a recommendation to make sure that, first of all, it needs paint. So, basically, if it's painted now, it gets painted again. Now, if it's a high ceiling and things like that, that don't have a lot of high traffic, we, and they look good, we don't touch them. So, we do that in the high-traffic areas. We also, a lot of folks don't realize this, that when we build the buildings, one of the last things we do on the exterior of our brick and stone is we waterproof it. So, it has an actual clear film that waterproofs the brick, all right, that generally, depending on whether it's latex or oil-based, will last anywhere from five to 10 years. We typically use oil-based because they warranty it for 10 years. We also go back, power wash these buildings and reseal that brick all over it. And that's a preventive measure that obviously keeps moisture out of the buildings. In the 2004 schools, you have two on this board agenda tonight that are the last of the 2004 schools that we haven't touched yet. And there's a reason for that, is we had replaced carpet in those two schools the prior year, and I couldn't actually logistically get it painted and replace the carpet at the same time. So, we moved them out one year, and now, we're painting them. One other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, with all of the materials that we're using in these schools, from the ceramic tile in the hallways, to the self-healing wallpaper in the hallways, and some of the natural brick, like at Bonner and Austin, in the interior hallways, that's just less we have to paint. So, we're actually seeing our square-foot paint cost come down because there's less to paint. In this particular case, it's actually a difference of 35% just with the ones that you see on your agenda tonight, because Owens does not have all of the self-healing vinyl, does not have the ceramic tile on the hallways. If you'll recall, it's cinder block and everything there is painted. So, that's why there's such a difference in that. But overall, from the 2004 schools to up till now, we've seen anywhere from 20% to 30% savings in those. So, just to give you an idea, since 2010, we've painted 2,217,036 square feet, or 51 acres, just to put it in perspective. If you want to go back to 2003, just double that, and it's 99 acres. Anyway, I wanted to give you a perspective of that tonight and just kind of let you know the commitment. This is prevented. It's not just aesthetics, but it does, takes things off our principals, let them do their jobs instead of worrying about painting schools. You guys, as a board members, I commend you for wanting to take care of these schools.
Thank you, Mr. Loper. It's hard to believe. It's been 13 years. Seems like yesterday.
It does.
But when you're running five to eight or 900 kids through a school a day, that's some, that is some wear. So, we appreciate you guys staying up on it. And we want to have schools, new and old, that we can be proud of.
Thank you. Anything else?
Any, any other comments for questions from Mr. Loper?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on Roman numeral 11E.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the recommendation of the administration in the Roman numeral 11E.
All right. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That carries. Then, we've got a, one item under curriculum instruction consent agenda memorandum of understanding between UT Tyler on a teacher quality grant program. Do we need to, anybody need to talk about that?
My comment would be positive. I have worked on teacher quality grant programs at Jarvis Christian College. And this is an outstanding program that the Texas Education Agency allows colleges and universities to apply for. And it enhances the teacher's instruction and provides even equipment and supplies as needed for the teachers to do an outstanding job. Maybe some of the teachers that Dr. Hanson was speaking of will be a part of this. It's an outstanding program, summer program. It really is. So, I hope we will. I think it's great that we're working with the University of Texas at Tyler.
Okay. Well, the administration has recommended approval of the memorandum of understanding. So, if we can get a motion now?
I move we approve the recommendation of the administration.
All right. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Superintendent's report, E-rate program?
Let Mr. Orbaugh give the board an update on the category-one project that we have. Mr. Orbaugh?
Yes, sir. We're pleased to let you know that we have received E-rate funding for category-one services, which are typically your utilities, long-distance, local phone service, internet access, wide-area networks. This year, that amount is $425,157 that we will receive as rebates against those services. And this year, our total E-rate monies we're bringing in is up to $571,000.
Okay, great. Reverend Hager, got any questions on that?
Nope.
We're good?
Got a much better deal than I get at my house.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Orbaugh, for the update. Future business?
Future business, you have, I'm booked too early.
Couple of meeting dates, possibly. Couple of meeting dates, possibly.
Possible meeting dates, May 4th, Board Workshop. That is the National Day of Prayer. We will have a participant from this dius that will actually be a part of that, the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast is also that morning. I hope those of y'all that are wanting to attend or able to attend can attend that. That's a very special moment that's shared by this communal, community, as Reverend Bowdery describes it as "the buckle of the Bible Belt."
Right.
So Reverend Mason, we're excited that you're going to be participating in that at Green Acres Baptist Church that day. Okay?
We're excited.
All right. So, May 4th, Board Workshop, whether or not it's on that day or not, we'll have to see, just depending upon our attendance there. Here, it might be moved to possibly May 16th or so. May 15th, regular meeting. That's a Monday night.
That's it. All right. That's all we have on the agenda for tonight. We appreciate all of you coming to our meeting and taking time out of your schedule. And we will see you at the next meeting. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.